Good morning to everybody. We are ready to start our April fifteenth Board of Supervisors meeting. I would like to start with the political religions. Heidi, could you start us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will start with human resources. Adopt a proclamation recognizing the Chief Information Officer, Michael Singleton, upon his retirement from Trinity County. Whereas, Michael Singleton has been a dedicated public servant to the county for over twenty-three years, serving as a pillar of this leadership, innovation, and technological excellence with the Information Technology Department. And whereas, Michael has been instrumental in modernizing and expanding the county's network infrastructure, transforming it from a simple flat network to a robust and secure system of interconnected sites and subnets, ensuring seamless communication and operations for county departments and the residents they serve. And whereas the leadership and expertise, Michael is champion in implementation of cutting-edge technologies, strengthens cybersecurity defenses, and enhances the efficacy and reliability of Trinity IT services that are essential to the functioning of local government. And whereas Michael's wealth of institutional knowledge and strategic vision have played a vital role in shaping Trinity County's technology landscape, and his partnership will leave a lasting impact on the departments of the county as a whole. Whereas, Michael, his technical acumen, Michael has been a steadfast and supportive leader, known for his ability to remain calm under pressure, communicate complex tactical complex concepts in a clear and concise manner, and foster an environment of collaboration and innovation within his team. Whereas, Michael's kindness, humor, and unwavering dedication to public service have positively influenced all who have had the privilege of working with him, making him not only a leader and respected, but also a cherished friend and mentor. Whereas, as he embarks on his new chapter of life, Michael leaves behind the legacy of excellence, professionalism, and camaraderie that will continue to inspire those who follow in his footsteps. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity commends Michael Singleton, Chief Information Officer, for his outstanding service and contributions to the County of Trinity, and does hereby extend him a heartfelt gratitude and best wishes for fulfilling a well-deserved retirement, duly passed and adopted on the fifteenth day of April two thousand twenty-two five by the Boards of Supervisors of Trinity County.
I just want to say thank you for always having that fantastic smile that you carry around. Technology is not one of my leading gifts and talents. And so you and your office's support in getting things set up and rearranged, and what do I do about this? You guys are always super, super helpful. And I just am really thankful that you chose Trinity County to do your great work in. So I hope that you get to go off and have all of the fun that you have earned.
Well, thank you. If I had known you all felt that way, I would have extended this a little bit. But it has been my pleasure and my honor to serve Trinity County. I had no idea what I was getting into when I came up to Trinity County. But you know, you end up somewhere, you stay, and twenty-three and a half years later, here I am, retiring. So, thank you.
And Michael, if I may, I would like to also say, I grew up in the corporate America, mostly in the technology world. And we've spent a little bit of time together, not a lot, but you know, we've talked about a few different things. And I will say, I think we've thrown pretty much every curveball at you that could be thrown at someone in your role. You're band-aiding together software systems that should have been replaced years ago because we can't afford to replace them. When we can, you're bringing in those new applications and getting launched with people who have been living with out or with old systems. We decide every once in a while that you should go without power for a while. And well, how about a cybersecurity attack? And floods. But truly, I mean, I think a lot of times people don't quite give credit to all that has to happen for all of this just to keep working. And I've been very impressed with what you've done, how you've worked through it and led your team and helped us get through it. So, thank you very, very much.
Well, thank you. Yeah, we've had a few knuckleballs, split-finger fastballs coming at us. So, thank you all. Thank you for the kind words.
Just one more thing, just really, really quick. I didn't meet you for very long, but you leave a mark. And we laughed and we had fun in the office that day when I was setting my things up. And you're a wonderful person. So, have a great retirement.
Okay. Thank you. That's it. I'm going to rescind my retirement. Just kidding. Thank you very much. As I say, it has been my pleasure and my honor to be here and be given an opportunity to serve the county. So, thank you.
A piece of gratitude I would like to add to the mix of comments is the way that you have advocated. I think back to more than one budget adoption process, when you have come with, here's why we need what we need, because your thoughts are always towards safety and security and the best end of our county. And it's difficult to be in that place of just really advocating for those things, but you have done it with information and certainly our best interest at heart. And so I thank you for standing up really for us in that way. That has been challenging and appreciated. So, thank you for that.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the words.
Michael, I just want to let you know, I know nothing about what you do. This is not my forte. But every time I met you, saw you, you were always happy, smiling. I think you kept good morale in your office there. And I appreciate everything you did. Like they said, we've been through a lot of things here in the last few years, upgrading old systems, cyber attack. And you did a fantastic job. I want to thank you. And if you do want to extend your retirement, let me know now.
I'm just kidding about that.
There's no joking when you're standing up there, okay? But thank you very much. I personally would like to thank you.
Well, thank you all. Thank you very much for the kind words. I really appreciate that.
Cher, I'd like to move adoption of the resolution.
I will second.
Okay. Anything else I need?
Do you want to say a little something? More? You're good?
No, I pretty much said everything I wanted to say.
We're going to get a picture in a second. Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Luke Wyler?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Chairman Gogan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for everything.
Okay, we will now move into public comment. Oh, no, excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me. Clerk of the Board, receive a presentation from Frontier Communications regarding a project of interest to the Weaverville area.
Chair, I'll go ahead and introduce this real quick. We have Doug McCallister here today from Frontier Communications. But I want to just make it clear, because we've had a number of quote broadband discussions lately, and there is, you know, another letter of support on the consent item for the general broadband topic. Doug is here today totally separate from any grant initiatives, any prior broadband discussions, any future grant initiatives we've been talking about. It's a very different reason Doug is asked to be here today. And we've been in discussions over the last few months, and this seemed to be the appropriate time for him to come and give an update as far as a private project that their company has decided to pursue and implement in the Weaverville area. Some will ask, well, why are we doing this? Because it only affects Weaverville. Well, it affects District Two and some of District One, as you look at the map. And then obviously, there could be future private business decisions that are made. I felt this was a good opportunity to get this in front of the board for full awareness, because this is a big deal, in my mind, for the county, because we're really stepping into, you know, the twenty-first century as far as the ability to provide high-speed internet, you know, to businesses and private entities. We, as a county, you know, are interested in this because we have county facilities within this district and within this mapping location. And if this new capability comes to fruition, as Frontier has been planning, you know, we will probably benefit from it as well and increase some of our IT capabilities. Michael was on a call yesterday. We were talking about this. So, this is not just, you know, a private company coming in and giving a pitch. You know, there's other implications to this. And this is very separate from any other grant broadband discussions. When we hear terms like bead, or FFA, or last mile, or middle mile, this is very different than that. So, I just want that to be clear for everybody, to include the public. So, with that, Doug, turn it over to you. You've got some slides and...
The whole story. My name is Doug McCallister and I'm Vice President of Frontier Communications. And I'm here for a couple of reasons. One is to kind of fill you in on some of the details and background of what Trent's talking about. But also primarily, and this is a little bit odd, but primarily introduce myself to you. My scope of work within Frontier, I was recruited a couple of years ago to create this position. I am responsible for interacting with every elected in California and every senior leader in cities and counties. And it is my job to see to it that I take Frontier off your desk. It is not your job to work Frontier, it is my job to work Frontier. And so, a lot of that stuff we're going to be talking about in very briefly here is for the purpose of, I've given you the information that you need. As a little bit of background on me, I am a former elected official. I was mayor of Murrieta. I was in the office for, I think, thirteen, fourteen years, retired in two thousand twelve. And I have spent many, many years on your side of the dais enduring presentations. I know some of those presentations were interesting, some not so much. But the ones I really appreciated, the ones that they just got to the point and were quick. So, my goal here is to get through the deck really fast, to leave time for questions for you as well. That's the real reason. But primarily, like I said, I'm here to introduce myself. I empathize with your side of the dais. I know what it's like to be going to church, go to a grocery store, go to a public event, I was talking about this earlier, and get landblasted by a constituent. And I'd have to say, sorry, I don't know what you're talking about, but let me find out. And then I get very frustrated when I couldn't find out, didn't have anybody to talk to to get the answers I needed. And so, it's my job see to it that if you ever, ever have a question or see an issue or hear of an issue, I'm your guy. I am Frontier for you. And so, if you ever have an issue, I don't care how small it is, don't even take the second breath. You'll have my contact information. Trent has it. Tell him about it. He'll call me, or text me, or email me, or whatever it might be. But don't let it languish. You'll have folks who are trying to work through the customer's service portal and very frustrated. They might reach out to you. I don't even know about that. I can fix that. My job is to see to those who are done. I have a whole team that works for me. That's the internal response team, so that when something comes to me, I escalate it. If I escalate it, it goes to the top of the pile. And we many times get things resolved same day, where some folks have waited for six weeks. And so, like I said, we want folks to go through the process first, but if they get frustrated, they'll get the results they need, and they reach out to you, to the county, let me know. Don't even take a second breath. That's why I exist. But right now, I want to go through real quickly, hopefully, these slides. And I think I'm the one controlling it, but I don't see that. There we go. Okay, how do I get to presentation mode? Should be up there. Ah, that looks much better. Thank you. Okay, let's skip this. Okay, fiber optic. What is it? Basically, it's next generation. It's basically, the good news is it's not copper. Copper gets wet, it stops working. Copper does not handle capacity as well. If you're on DSL, it gets slow. And fiber optic is future-proof technology that we're bringing to, spending many millions of dollars to bring to you in this county. And it's more efficient, it's more resilient, it's more reliable. And many of you already know about that, when you've heard about fiber optic, but it is, it's really cool. And you'll see why here in a sec. The reason I'm here, I've kind of explained a little bit here, but part of the, this is a quote for me, not the company, but what Frontier has been trying to do is do business better. Not that, you know, the typical stereotypical utility situation. We are the phone company here in the county. And so, we are a utility. And so, we want to do business better. So, if we want to do business better, then we better, we better, and do it bigger, we need to do better. And so, part of the reason they created this position was to create that better side of doing business. An example of that would have been my discussions with your county's CIO. Trent and I have sat down on two occasions now, one yesterday with an all-hands meeting with my team and his team. And the purpose of that was to do business better. I will tell you, and I've already told Trent this, but I've done many, many of these all over the state for cities and counties. I have never had an all-hands meeting where the questions were so good. Typically, they last about half hour to forty-five minutes, where our teams talk to each other, we get everything worked out. And we were like an hour and a half, and they were all very good questions. So, kudos to you and your team for that. I think we're going to have a good experience as a result. But this is the basic way things work. Before we get started, we go through and do the normal neighborhood inspections and the markings, make sure we know where the utilities are. And then we move into the permit and construction process there. And then, this is the after-construction. I have an arrow there because I'm most concerned about that. I want to make sure that our contractors do their jobs, so that when they go into a neighborhood and they do the bill, they actually finish it. They don't leave anything temporary. Or in the process of the bill, they do it the way they're supposed to have placards on their cars and all kinds of little things like that. And if any of that isn't happening, I need to know. I can fix it if I know. So, when I say don't take the second breath, it's things like that I want to hear about. And so that you don't have to deal with it, but I can deal with it. So, if your constituents come to you with an issue, let me help you fix that. I'm going to do the first three there. What we're talking about here is hundred percent fiber connectivity. And I'll show you the path here in a couple of slides. But this does not involve any copper whatsoever. This is not glorified DSL. This is fiber from our central office all the way to the side of a house or a business. Because of that, you're going to have a stronger connection, meaning there's no chokehold. I read a study that I think the number was, the average home has twenty-four connected devices. And I didn't believe it. And so, I thought I would check my house. It's my wife, it's myself, and my cat. My cat doesn't use this stuff. She just sleeps all day. So, I went through, we have, last time I checked, thirteen different devices that are always on the internet. And I have this product here. And it's, we can use all thirteen, and it doesn't slow anything down, which is nice. If you want to watch Super Bowl, and everybody else does too, it's not going to buffer, it's not going to slow you down. You don't have those choke points that you would have normally with the copper side of things. And you would have that on our current system, which is copper. This third point, their access of the five gigs, that's inaccurate. We have now moved to seven gigs. And I'll show you those different areas we have there here in a bit. But the bottom line here is that is upload and download. When we come into you and we're saying you're going to get a gig of service, we're not hedging. It's a gig of service, download, and a gig of service, upload. Many times you'll hear that you're going to get a gig of service, but it's a gig of service. Download is about, you know, fifty meg upload or something like that. So, this is symmetrical up and down. The rest of that, you can read at your own leisure. Like I said, I'm trying to be quick. Here's the path, our central office here in Weaverville. And then it moves into a distribution hub, and then that's usually outside, well, and I would say always outside a neighborhood. We don't like to put these, they're very small boxes, but we still don't want to put them in front of people's houses. You know, we don't mess up their views. So, we put those out. And from that distribution hub, then we go to the distribution lines, which goes to the terminals. And those terminals are, depending on whether it's aerial or underground, they basically cover all of the homes. And then, once the customer decides that they want the service, we don't do this until then, then they order the service. And then we move from the terminal to the house and do a drop there, so they'll have that. And that drop service and connecting the home and the customer up does not cost the customer a dime. This is the general map here of what we're doing in two thousand twenty-five. It was mentioned that this is our two thousand twenty-five bill for Trinity County. Doesn't mean we're not going to be able to do more. We are, like I said, we're the phone company. This is just what our budget allows us to do this year. Like Trent said, we're not using any grant money. This is a private effort. It's Frontier company, it has stockholders, and the stockholders expect us to make them money. And so, this is an investment of several million dollars into your county. That's all private. There's no grant money involved whatsoever. In this iteration of the bill, we're looking at around sixteen hundred homes. And when I'm talking about the homes, the primary purpose of this bill here is fiber to the homes. So, when we're talking about having up to seven gigs of service, that's at your house. And it's going to be very reliable at that point. That doesn't mean we can't do the businesses too. So, if any of you hear of a business that's frustrated, trying to get hooked up with us, let me know, and I'll take care of it. But these blue lines, this is focused on where it's going for the fiber to the home. The blue lines show, it's pretty accurate, but if you see that red triangle there, that's where our central office is generally located. And we're looking to do everything south of that red triangle first, and then everything north of that red triangle on the second face. That looks like, so we're looking at, hoping to start around, we want it to start around May, but it looks like it's going to start around June now. And we believe that people should be able to start getting in service around August for that first phase. And then, that we want to have everybody in service that wants the service by the end of the year. The construction itself is going to be mostly aerial, where our copper lines are. Once again, we're enhancing our current footprint. And so, where our copper lines are now, we're going to overlap onto those wires. You hardly even see those wires overlapped onto the current copper there. I think about eighty-five, ninety percent of the build is aerial, which is great, because it's less impacted, your streets and roads and such. There will be some that's in existing conduit, but anywhere that was direct buried, meaning a hundred years ago, when they put this stuff in, they just dug a trench, laid the bare wire in there, and covered it over, will need to add conduit to it. And so, there's some of that as well. But all of that is going to be working through your permitting process and such, so we make sure that the way it's done is done so that the least amount of impact to your community possible. I want to get off this slide quickly, because this is not a marketing thing, but I wanted to basically show that these are the different amounts of service you can get, and then the pricing there. I'll get off that, because I don't want this to be a commercial. Other than to say, the pricing is very affordable. I believe the five hundred over five hundred, which is what I have in my house, it shows there, it was like fifty-nine dollars a month. That's, I pay forty-four. I mean, there's deals on that all the time. And you'll see all of that all the time. The reason our pricing is so reasonable for that is because we have divorced ourselves from video. We are, I mean, you can stream whatever, it's a computer. Basically, it's your internet pipeline, so you can stream. I stream everything. Before I did this, I was paying well over two hundred dollars a month for cable, then I had six thousand channels, of which I watched six. Now, I'm well under a hundred dollars, and I watch everything I need, sports, you name it, and such, because I'm able to stream that as well. So, that's why the pricing for that is so reasonable as well. So, I went as fast as I could, probably talked too fast, but this is the time for any questions you might have.
I have a question.
Go ahead, please.
I'm just curious to know how many folks are going to be put to work doing this in our community? Or will you be bringing folks in, and they'll be staying here, or will it be local?
I think it's a combination, because we have specialists, the techs and such. What's called the CM3, our inspector, they move around. Ideally, we want to use as many folks here as possible for this. And I can, I just don't know the ratio at this point, but I do know it'd be a combination.
Okay, that's good, because working people always need to stop and get a cup of coffee and buy some lunch. And anytime there's, you know, work happening, it's more money for the local economy. So, thank you for that.
Well, and our guys will do that. But if they ever finish their lunch and leave trash, I need to hear about it. I'll take care of that.
Doug, I had a question here. You had a time of construction coming soon, delayed a little bit. Any idea on the time of completion?
Our goal is to be absolutely done with everything by the end of the year, by December. The southern phase we're working on, probably done August, September timeframe with that part of it. And then we'll move to the northern phase, and be finished by December. It's a much bigger build at that point. However, the folks that are in the southern phase don't have to wait to get the service for the folks in the northern phase to be finished. As we pass by the houses, and once we get them ready for service, they'll be able to go online, put their address in, and it'll tell whether or not it's ready for them or not. And we'll have some folks who will be online in August.
Thank you.
Sure.
You did make a point of distinction about homes versus businesses, as though homes were the goal at this time, but if businesses wanted. And I was just curious, why the distinction?
Because it's a different process for businesses. It's related, because we're passing by them to get to the homes. And so, the infrastructure is going to be in place. But the businesses sometimes require IP addresses, or whatever. They require more than a home's going to require. And so, basically, what happens here is that when I hear about a business that is looking for this service, or the business reaches out directly to Frontier. And so, if we make sure there's an account representative who gets with them, and they walk through the process of what they need, in many cases, I'm guessing, say it's a pizza restaurant or whatever else, they can use the same systems that the homes are using. I mean, seven gigs is ridiculous. I personally don't know what I would do with seven gigs in my house. So, there's plenty of capacity for a business. But some businesses like to have upwards of a hundred gigs for whatever they're doing. So, we have to have those separate discussions. But I can tell you, for the homes, those are the speeds that we can provide for the homes. And that's why I kind of put the distinction there.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Supervisor Luke Wyler.
Thank you. So, two things. One is, do you, as Frontier, work in partnership with other providers? And I'll give you the example of, sometimes there's a tower that goes up for one carrier, but another carrier can tap onto that same tower and then provide services as well, talking like cellular and so forth. And so, I'm just wondering, as you bring in and establish infrastructure and distribution, do you look at that as that is Frontier only, and that's how we do it? So, okay.
Yeah, now, there's third-party providers and all that, which is way above my head, how that all works out. But once again, this is a private company coming in, well, it's a public company because of investors and such, investing several million dollars into this. And so, we tend not to support our competitors, if you will. And so, yeah, we're putting the money into it, so we're the ones who will be using it.
Well, and I say that just, one, understanding my first nine years of my career with AT&amp;T.
Oh, very good. Oh, very good.
And so um, you know, sometimes you can sort of white label and partner and, and distribute through, but I also understand the sole focus. Uh, the other thing I wondered is, we have ongoing challenges that I know our CIO is working on regarding emergency services communication. And I'm just wondering if that is, uh, I know you could provide the, the fiber, but I'm just wondering, does Frontier ever offer anything special in terms of pricing or services delivery for uh, covering emergency service communication?
Yep, there's, um, that gets back to the whole business discussion there, that we, basically we get an account representative to work with you. We actually, we are, have already started that process as of yesterday's meeting, because I'm concerned about a bill you're getting, I think it's too high. And I wanna find out why. And um, so it's um, we're very, very focused on that for nine-one-one services, for any of that, we're very focused on that. We actually have, you know, as the phone company, we have responsibilities there as well. Um, the um, challenges have been so far, um, and this isn't just here, this is everywhere. Uh, right now, the Palisades area with the fires, you know, everything, just took everything out, so we had to fix that. The, we have a huge issue right now statewide with copper theft. They'll come in, they'll cut down the poles, take the, take the copper wire and, and when that happens, we've had cities go down. We've had military bases go down because they took our copper to do that. And so we're, we're trying to deal with that. My, my solution to that is get rid of the copper. Um, but there's a process for that we have to follow. But until that happens, um, you know, you'll, you'll, we have situations where they'll steal the copper and it takes down nine-one-one services. Uh, to me, that is a homeland security issue. And so I am working statewide to try to get that resolved as well. Uh, but with regard to, it, not just emergency service, but even connectivity between your facilities here in the county and such. I'm already working to put together, uh, get a account representative to talk to your folks, to see how we might be able to have, if we have anything to offer that will help along these lines.
Okay, and final question on that is redundancy. I'm, I'm guessing that you won't have redundant uh, service coming into the county, just because we're not that big, but I thought I would ask anyway. Like what your, if your main, if your main connection goes down to what you're about to build out.
Right.
Is there a backup or is that the line and if it goes down, then there, everybody's out?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna have to confirm, but I will be shocked if we don't have redundancy. Um, especially with the fiber and such, but um, it's, where, where it gets a little dicey isn't so much the feeder lines of redundancy. It's once we get to the distribution lines, if somebody steals or destroys or a backhoe hits it, uh, you know, going to the house between the hub or whatever else, but to the, at least to the um, um, to the wire center and perhaps to the hubs, I don't know, I'll have to find out.
Okay, thank you.
I, I'll be, I'll be a little surprised. I know they, they've got a new technology that we have employed elsewhere that provided more redundancy uh, on that. When it comes to the businesses, um, many times, and it gets back to the business question, it's a little, it's more expensive sometime for businesses because they want that as well. And so we have to build that into what the product that we, that we sell to businesses. But I'll find out and I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Thank you, thank you for your presentation as well.
I appreciate, I'm gonna get back to my plane on time, so this is great, I appreciate it.
It, it'll be delayed.
Yeah, their internet went out, I heard. Yeah, no, I appreciate the time, uh, really soon, dude, and I appreciate, I mean, like I said, I spent many years on your side of the day, so my hat's off to you for your service. And um, like I said, any issues, hopefully there will be zero, hopefully. But should something come up or you just have a question, Trent has my contact information, reach out to me and I'll take care of it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We will now move into the public comment part of our meeting. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address. The board as a whole, the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer to subject matter to the appropriate departments for follow-up or schedule the matters on a subsequent board agenda. Do we have any public comment in the room?
Good morning, Chair Supervisors Lisa Wright-Lewiston. Um, just general public comment regarding cannabis program. So recently at the last board meeting, and we'll get to that on the agenda, it was kinda brought forth that there may be the opportunity for some improvements or changes, and particularly around the concept of overlays. So um, District One and District Two, you've very successfully carved out um, prohibiting cannabis cultivation. We would like to look at a positive approach of kind of a carve-in. I believe in planning terms, that's really called an overlay zone. Flora, the company that I own, has been working closely with friends of Post Mountain. Many members are here today and has been led by Chu Peng Li as well as Tommy Lor, who will speak uh, around this concept. And overlay would kinda be a green zone. It could be applied to other areas, be very similar to your carve-outs where there's a geographically defined area that um, has maybe some different requirements than our standard cannabis program. Because what is coming out, as we're working, we have about thirty people from Post Mountain Plus in, working to get into the program, is that from an environmental impact um, point of view, the disturbance is already there, right? These are old legacy, which we'll get to that, I should say, you know, previously unlicensed um, sites. And so how do we now ensure that that uh, environmental protection is in place? We'll get into the program. But as you're looking to build tiny homes and put in septics, you're actually kinda contributing more to the potential for blight as well as environmental impact. You know, the county created this subdivision back in the seventies, a thousand smaller parcels with no infrastructure support. It's not really realistic environmentally to think that you're gonna put a thousand septics out there on every one of these little parcels. So how can we move forward now? We would like an overlay concept considered um, and agenda is at a future uh, board meeting so that you can direct staff to investigate that further. I have spoken with staff, CIO, as well as um, cannabis director about this concept, and there is support for that. So I would like to have you take a look at that, because it's really not economically beneficial to have to put those um, additional investments in place when in fact all they wanna do there is farm. Why is there a, a tiny home that's needed and a septic when we could be following this California regulations for farm worker provisions? There's a whole set of rules and regulations for migratory and temporary seasonal kind of workers. So that would all need to come into play. I'm just kinda launching this as a concept for discussion, because I think it could benefit not only the county through cultivation tax, but also the farmers through economic prosperity and the environment by not having new disturbance beyond what's currently there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comment in the room?
Good morning, uh, Board of Supervisors and County Authority. My name is Chu Peng Li, and one of the community leader in Post Mountain. I'm here today speaking on behalf of the community. Lays last year, me and Tommy Lor, we've been working closely with Flora, uh, Lisa Wright and Flora. Uh, organize and assist is so-called traditional grower in Post Mountain to apply for commercial, it becomes legit uh, in the program. And with the, I found out that many uh, problem, many difficulty facing the farmer who wanted to apply for commercial. Uh, but one of the uh, top issue, uh, problem is the requirement of drilling in septic. So that has become a problem for the community. Uh, not able to apply for commercial as they wish. I'm here today, uh, asking respectfully, asking the Board of Supervisors to revisit that requirement and remove it through the special zoning, whatever the overlay zone that you guys have discussed. That will benefit not just the farmer, but I believe will also benefit the county as well. Further, like Lisa just saying, uh, the last meeting of the Board of Supervisors um, talking about the so-called legacy cultivation. Uh, I don't know the language of that yet, but that scare um, lot of the um, farmer in Post Mountain. As you guys know, Post Mountain, we don't have very large land to do cultivation. The average is like two acre, average um, land is like two acre. So whatever it is, is, if gonna impact um, Trinity, uh, is gonna impact Post Mountain community, then we'd like to be part of that, you know, answer or whatever, the new order, we'd like to know more in specifics on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good morning, Board, Board Supervisors. My, my name's Tommy Lor. I'm also a resident in the Post Mountain. And uh, I had just have a few things I just wanna point out, um, it's from my perspective. And um, see if something that you can take into considerations. Um, I think that the three hundred fifty feet, the variance that we, that we use for the commercial grow, um, I feel like the parcel up there are too small. And um, if, if you use that to justify an art overlay zone, it, it not, it doesn't work for us. Because we have an acre, acre and a half to, and, and I think that's usually applied to bigger acre, like five and ten acres. So you have to look at Post Mountain that we're such a small parcel that if you do that, then um, people are not gonna tend to apply for commercial, because they know that there's no way the very, you know, I'm not gonna be able to overcome the variance. And you know, they, I think the, the, the turn has changed from various to um, right, buffer zone. Um, yeah, ABR, and then now it's to something like lega- uh, legacy cultivation. And we also need a, a better um, legal definition of what that means. So that way we understand in simple, simple English term, and what do you actually mean by that? So, and also, I, I guess I just wanna express something else, like um, the row up there, that needs to be worked on and some of the stuff, but those are just, that's my opinion. But uh, again, um, I, I seen that when there was snow up there, that the county came and plowed and that, thank you. I appreciate you for uh, you know, still remember the Post Mountain, so uh, thank you so much.
Thank you, any other public comment in the room? On Zoom?
Catherine Sidman. Uh, good morning, Board, Catherine Sidman-Lewiston. Um, my job is in the cannabis industry at large, very little of that. Um, the activities that I do in my job um, take place in Trinity County. Yet we're quite behind in terms of type six and type seven licensure. But when I see a room like this, that's this full, that's coming to the supervisors, asking for assistance, I see an industry that's fighting for life in this county. And whatever you hear about the state of cannabis in California, um, most of those things, I mean, the price compression, yes, applies, but we have something special here. And now is the time before federal legisla- legalization. Now is the time to help these farmers build an infrastructure here and build their businesses so that when we're ready, because we have something special that comes from the Emerald Triangle, that's known all over the world as a premium product. And we are suffocating, we are suffocating, not because the industry and because of price compression, but because we're not listening. When farmers come before you like they are today and they tell you things that are happening, small changes in definitions of legacy, small changes in code, when they tell you that these are going to affect them and they're going to out of business, we won't be able to go back and have another opportunity to rebuild this infrastructure when the industry finally gets to a point with federal legalization, when our farmers could truly take advantage of that. We have, we have Hayfork leaning in and doing a whole tourism campaign. I'm going to a conference in Berlin and there is someone speaking about what Hayfork is doing in California. And yet, this is a room full of people asking you for sensible, reasonable, small changes that help them protect and build this infrastructure, which we're very, very behind, folks, we're very behind, but it's not lost yet. It's not lost yet, the patient isn't dead. The patient needs CPR, but the patient isn't dead. And I'm so concerned that um, I'm so concerned that we are really going to shoot ourselves in the foot. And then when we have this opportunity, when it's finally here, because of moves on the federal level, when it's finally here, we won't be able to take advantage of it and it'll be too late for our farmers. So I beseech you to listen to this industry. There is no other single industry in our economy in Trinity County that could look in front of you, just look in front of you. No one else comes in numbers like this. No one else comes to planning commission and supervisors' meetings to beseech you for help. And we're beseeching you to listen to these things and to help. Now's the time.
Thank you.
Ben Kellogg?
Good morning, Board and Staff, Ben Kellogg, Weaverville. Um, just a couple update requests uh, that I'm looking for. Um, I'm hoping that we can have some type of update from the county soon on uh, the tax initiative for next year, whether it's sales or, or housing tax, what the uh, what the plan is. Uh, we're almost into May and uh, you know, we're a year, year and a half out. And there's a, quite a bit of education that we're gonna need if uh, we're going to get this passed. We all know the taxes aren't uh, is the three letters swear word up here. Um, so I'm hoping that the county has a plan um, and that we're gonna start having more meetings like we have with stakeholders. Um, and the county uh, ramp up an education plan, because it is going to take a lot of educating uh, to get this passed. Um, number two would be uh, what's going on with the budget process uh, for this coming year? June is coming soon. I'm hoping that we have a budget on time this year and it's not rolling into September, October again. I'm hearing some really disturbing things, but again, about the budget, that's gonna be even worse than it was last year. Especially within public safety. Um, so hopefully we could get some type of uh, something going with the Board of Supervisors on, on that. And as well as uh, a previous request I had, any update on, from the federal implications that's going on trickling down into Trinity County? Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you.
Pasha?
Hi, uh, good morning. Uh, good morning to all the boards and supervisors and all the um, um, everybody's there at the meetings. I want to address my concern and that. Uh, first of all, I wanna thank you to the Board of Supervisors and the team of the uh, cannabis divisions for your hard work and dedications to refine the ABR's ordinance, the languages. And um, I appreciated that you guys take that into considerations uh, to amend the uh, ABR's ordinance uh, that could unintentionally limit the ability of small parcels and owners to become licensed commercial cultivators. And um, you guys did a great job by revising the language of the ordinance to make it better for the community at large. I um, just wanna touch base about the small land parcels, uh, revisit about um, what Lisa and Chu Peng have mentioned about the overlay zones. Because of the small land parcels has, is a small land parcels, less than, most, majority of the land parcel up in Trinity Pines are less than um, five acres. Uh, I would say eighty percent of them are. I would say eighty percent of them are less than three acres. And because of the Trinity County's buildings ordinance, the codes, there is a setback between this resident, the dwellings and the subject. And there have to be certain feet away from the house to the setback and from the house to the dwellings. So if Trinity County, if the Board of Supervisor and Cannabis Division could take that into consideration to revisit, what can we, as the policymakers, can do this to benefit the small land parcel, not just Trinity pine itself, but the, all of the small land parcel in Trinity County at large? And that will not limit the potential grower and will allow the citizen to participate, to be contributes to our local agricultural economic. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no additional raise stands.
All right. We will move on to, you got something? We'll take a five-minute break now and we'll come back at five minutes to ten. Okay, we will start with reports and announcements. First off, from our department heads in the room.
Morning, Board, Chair. Ed Presley, Deputy Director of Community Development and Planning Director. I just have a short little public service announcement. I don't know, I don't know how you guys wanna phrase this or whatever. But what I wanna do is, I just wanna, I just wanna bring to light the issues. And they're not something that's happening today. It's something that's been ongoing for quite a few years, at least the three years I've been here with personnel, and it is retention. And when you put a couple of people in a box and you keep beating them every day, sooner or later, people are gonna leave. So today is actually a happy day for myself. Me and my wife's twenty-fifth wedding anniversary is today, and I just found out that she's cancer-free.
Yay!
So that's pretty huge for us. And when I got to work this morning, I was met with a letter of resignation from our senior planner. So Ms. Hedke will be departing next month on or about May ninth. So what I'm trying to just reinforce here is the idea that planning needs help. So I hope, I hope there will be some consensus to help this budget season. But these are the kind of things that we have to deal with on a daily basis in that division specifically. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other from inside the room? Terry? No? Hanging out? Okay, we will move on to the CIO. CIO Tuttil?
Thank you, Chair. Got a few things. So last meeting, I spoke about the California Radio Interoperable System. Acronym is CRIS. And the possibility, if that system might be a good fit for Trinity County. On April twenty-fourth, we have a meeting set up with the Public Safety Communications Group within the CalOES structure for a demo and some initial discussions and Q and A. In addition to this effort, there's another ongoing effort that the Sheriff's Office is leading to look at, you know, how we better maintain and enhance the current emergency response communication infrastructure throughout the county. So kinda a couple different approaches there on the communications front. The school rural schools funding, as previously discussed, is still not passed. There's real no updates from the last report, but there's still a path to passage. As you know, Congress is on recess right now until the April, until April twenty-eighth. So, you know, no actions being taken. But at this time, you know, just for your awareness, you know, we are planning based upon realism and we're not expecting to get these funds this fiscal year. So we are planning appropriately within the Department of Transportation. With Michael's retirement and the proclamation we just had, we've been working through the CIO, yes, CIO IT Director recruitment process. Last week, the recruitment closed after running a nationwide ad for about three weeks. Received over a dozen offers. So just for your awareness, you know, we'll be working through the HR process to hopefully bring on another CIO IT Director without much of a gap as Michael's last day is end of the month. The transition to our updated emergency notification system is going well. There'll be a presentation is currently being scheduled and looked at for the next board meeting. And kind of a go-live there, we'll provide an overview of the new system and what the potential new capabilities are for that system. That's the Ready Trinity we've previously discussed. Last week, we met with the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation, the ordinary office personnel came up to the county and gave us some good information on the overall dam operations within Trinity County. As you're aware, there's three dams in the county. One, Grass Valley, Lewiston, and the Trinity Reservoir, for which the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation is responsible for operations and maintenance. After the thorough presentation, we took a small group and we went out to the Trinity and Lewiston dams for a tour of those facilities to give us an idea of what they actually look at when they do these inspections, where their maintenance schedules are currently at, and just kinda how they operate and what they do for us as accounting. Through our OES team, we'll ensure the proper emergency response plans are in place and there is some public awareness of what those plans are. This will be folded into our new Ready Trinity Community Communication, Community Emergency Management Platform. So over the next few months, you know, there will be some enhanced capabilities that the county will be privy to. And we will make sure that this particular topic is incorporated in that so there is some better public awareness as far as what those plans are and who is affected if there's any emergencies at the dams. And just for everybody's awareness, I came away from the meeting very confident that our dams are in fact very safe. There is a very, very established methodology that the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation goes through to inspect the dams on a very periodic basis at different levels, all the way from monthly up to an eight-year cycle. So I'm very confident that the dams are in fact safe. And there is a very solid maintenance program in place. And, you know, we have a very open partnership with the Bureau and good contacts there. If there's questions or further information, you know, that the Board wants or that you hear through constituents, you know, we have some good contacts there and can provide additional information as needed. And just my last comment is, you know, the Board, a few meetings ago now, approved Liz Hamilton as the Mental Health Director and Alcohol and Other Drug Program Administrator. And we received official acknowledgement from that appointment through DHCS this last week. So that's just another big step towards our Health and Human Services Agency establishment. So real happy that DHCS recognized that board appointment. And that's all I got for now.
Trent, I have a question. I think the majority of us know about the Lewiston and Trinity Dams, but the Grass Valley Creek kinda goes under the radar, we'll say. Did they say anything about that and the maintenance of that? I get up there quite a bit and do some fishing. And I don't think the general public knows there's one there.
Yeah, that's a good point. There are probably a lot of people that don't know there is a U.S. Bureau of Reclamation maintained dam up there. That dam goes through the same maintenance cycle that any other earthen dam does that the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation is responsible for. So there are inspections, there's inspection reports, there's, you know, their normal process they follow for that. Obviously, it's, they are scaled based upon the magnitude of the dams. So not all dams are created equal as far as what they inspect, but they do have a routine inspection process for the Grass Valley Dam as well.
And that dam's about thirty years old?
Ninety, yeah, that seems about right.
Okay. Thank you. We'll now move on to reports from members of the Board. I will start. I'm on several committees with Supervisor Luke Wyler, Supervisor Cox, and Supervisor Carpenter-Harris. So I let them speak about that mostly because they are copious note-takers and I am not. So they do a much better job of that than I do. You know, I just wanted to mention something that came to me in the last few days. This is just a personal thing that, you know, I was in Las Vegas a couple of days back, three or four days back, and it's so overdrawn, it's so overdone, it's so over the top, it's so, it's so crazy there. It's just, it's just ugly. It's really ugly. Then I was in Detroit, Michigan yesterday, which once was the hub of American and industrial. The big three motor companies are there, all the people that make the parts for them. It was, it was big and it took a big hit. And now it's kinda, it's kinda coming out of, it's getting back on its feet and moving on. And then I got home last night very late. I wake up this morning, I look out my window, I'm in Trinity County. And I will say this, that whoever you look to, up, down, sideways, inwardly, whoever you get your moral fortitude from, I would thank them for letting you be here in Trinity County. This is one of the best places I've ever been. We should all be lucky to be here and do not take what we have for granted. This is a special place that I think we all should be happy to live here. It's wonderful. And thank you all for being here and I love being here and working for you. We will go to Heidi, please.
I concur with you, Supervisor. I wake up sometimes at my house and I think, who gets to live here? It's just an amazing, especially this time of year, when everything is blooming and there's new It's just an amazing, especially this time of year when everything is blooming and there's new flowers every week. First, I just want to say shout out to my district and I know everyone's getting ready to plant their vegetable gardens and we're all planting flowers and fighting with our husbands for, who keep letting the chickens out and digging up those flowers that we, that we just planted. There's a lot of good life being lived outside with these sunny days and I know everyone is grateful for them. I just wanted, I was really happy to attend the Junction City Scholarship Night. That was a lot of fun. It was very fun to get to visit with the folks in that community and to be part of the countywide fundraising efforts that we all, you know, engage in to raise money for our high school students to obtain scholarships after application. Scholarship Night in Trinity County towards the end of the school year is just, it's, it's mind blowing how much money we are able to raise for our students and to help put them on the trajectory for personal growth and hopefully to come back here, live and use their gifts and talents here. But that was a really nice night. I'm grateful to have been invited and to have gone. I attended the Rural Action Caucus meeting that I am in with, with NACO. Also Public Lands, both were laden with concerns over secure rural schools as CIO Tuttle mentioned. There is, the, the battle still is on. We are still, you know, working towards communicating with the Speaker of the House and the folks there in Congress and also in the Senate to rally this. It's, it's hugely necessary for small communities across the public lands counties in America. So that's onward. We're keeping a really close eye through the Public Lands Caucus on the rewriting and the updating, if you will, of the Endangered Species Act and how some of those definitions may change as they work through the process. We need to speak into that with some of our local concerns. And then also the ongoing efforts to prevent and then also recover from wildfires as they continue to surge across our landscapes. I am so grateful for our Forest Service and the folks BLM and then of course our local folks with the RCDs, our fire safe councils, as they, you know, open some of those dollars that were paused for a little while and begin to hit the ground again this season. I, I pray for their safety always. But these issues that we face up in Congress right now will, will impact our ability to be sustained in those efforts. So I'm constantly speaking into that to the best of my ability. I also attended the Northwest California RCND Council meeting, which they convinced me to become president of that council or chair of that. And so, you know, you get thrown into these things, like it or not, but I am happy to do that. Also attended the collaborative meetings that were in my section. And there's one more that's missing my path. I attended the PATH meeting as well. So, and then I leave tomorrow afternoon. I will be at a meeting in Colusa on Thursday for, for the county. Yeah, it's just a lot. So we all keep doing it and we all keep going. And, and I always try my hardest to keep the faces and the minds and the voices of, of the, of my district in, in my mind when I'm sitting in those meetings and listen for the, the items that will pertain to us and the things that we can fight for. I also want to say that our, my district lost a lovely lady and we had a celebration for her life this last Saturday. And I just want to pay brief tribute to Granny, who made everyone who came in and out of the Sawyer Store feel loved and appreciated. And I just pray for her family as they mourn that loss, but I know that she is resting well in heaven. So, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Carpenter-Harris, Supervisor Lutwiler.
Sure. Okay. I, since the last board meeting, worked with the Economic Development Summit Group that I mentioned before. This is going to be a summit that will be held in Lake County. Represents several counties, including ours. So we will be having some material included, or some content included in the material and have an opportunity to speak there as well. I wanted to highlight that we had a new restaurant open in Lewiston. So I attended the soft opening of that on April fourth. It's always nice to see something opening instead of, you know, we always fret over the, those that are closing. Was able to attend the fundraiser for the volunteer, Copy Creek Volunteer Fire Department on April fifth. That was a great event and they did really well. On the SKED, which is the Economic Development Group, led the last, I think, I think we're done, Strategic Planning Committee meeting. So we are now ready to prepare a strategic plan presentation to the full board of that organization. And much like we have now in Trinity County, where we have very clearly established priorities, strategies, measures of success and goals related to those, that's what we'll now have in place really for the first time for this organization. So I think it's been a good process, if, maybe a little painful as well. The, I was able to participate in the tour that, and presentation that CIO Tuttle mentioned about the dams. And, and as he did, I came away feeling very comfortable about the work that is being done. And, and perhaps, you know, because sometimes you just have to say, well, let, let's get it to the bottom line. If people are saying, what is keeping us from having an Oroville Dam experience? And the answer was primarily, beyond all the things that CIO Tuttle explained about maintenance and so forth, is management. Because even though we get a lot of grief from different sides about with the lake level, a big part of the reason that there was water being let out this winter, where people would have loved to see the lake get full, was to stay within safe levels so that if we had a hundred-year storm, we could handle it. And what happened with Oroville is they were way above that limited, that level, and then they got their storm and they couldn't handle it. And so that's a pretty basic way of approaching it. But when you add to that all of the maintenance and repairs as needed and the great work that's being done between our Office of Emergency Services and their personnel, I think there's just a, a lot that's in place. And I look forward to when, as you said, CIO Tuttle, when we're ready to release the new alert system information, I think people will have a better understanding of all that. But it was very encouraging. Assemblymember Chris Rogers is going to be in town later today. He is having a public meeting this afternoon, I think at one, out there in the library. And then I will be meeting with him if I, if we're done in here later after that with the TCDC Board because he wanted to pick up on some of the things that we had shared with his representative Heidi McHugh when she was in town. The NORTEC, which is the, the Workforce Development Group, I think I've mentioned before. I'm the Chair of that group now and that means I'm also the Chair of the Executive Committee. So we're going to have a meeting this coming week regarding their CEO and a, a annual review and some of those sorts of things. So we'll be having that on April seventeenth. And Rape Prevention and Education Coalition Meeting. There is a meeting on April sixteenth. And it's, it's a great group of folks coming together to try to work on a very important topic. And I'm, was happy to have been involved in the last meeting and look forward to tomorrow's meeting. The last thing I had here was the Tourism Development Advisory Board. So we continue to have our every other week meetings and we continue to have ad hoc meetings. And I am not on that ad hoc committee because there were other board members that wanted to participate in that and because of the limit on the numbers we could have. But those three people then meet with the Civitas representatives. Civitas being the consulting firm that we hired to help us through the process. And it's helping us keep on task. And so we've been able to confirm a few decisions and, and make plans for going forward. But one of those decisions was if the division or the district is set up, I guess I should back up in case people are hearing this for the first time. So this would, if successful, set up a Tourism Development District. It would be based on the collection of a three percent assessment collected from people spending money at these facilities and then brought back in to be spent on tourism development. Not back to the county coffers, not like TOT that comes here and is used however we use it. It would be specifically to a separate entity. And so that separate entity had to be determined. Do we go to an existing nonprofit or do we go to a new nonprofit? And so right now, we're currently working on plans to set up a new nonprofit that would have its own board and that board would be responsible for how those funds were collected and allocated. One of the things that has come up on multiple occasions is, like TOT, there have been previous attempts to do this. And the previous attempts were focused specifically on the hotels. Right now, our focus is on lodging, of short-term lodging. So that would mean hotels, vacation rentals, KAOA campgrounds and so forth. There is still some concern amongst people that I hear from, including in the Advisory Board. But will we run into the same hurdle that, that there will be enough resistance that will fail? When we talked about the possibility of expanding that, and you can expand it however you want, you just have to be very specific. So you could expand it to include restaurants. You could expand it to include gas stations. You could, you know, so anything that's sort of related to tourism and might benefit by more tourism coming here, you know, you can expand it. But whatever you expand it to, now every business that fits that criteria is involved in the vote. And, and so we had some discussion about that. And the reason that we backed off pretty quickly was that Civitas said, well, what you can afford to do based on what you've already given us money for is the lodging. That's because that's information we've already gathered. That's some things that we can easily work on. Terry McRae only has to give us information on TOT, not dig into sales tax information. So that's all you can afford to do with that. And the guesstimate was probably another forty to fifty thousand dollars and probably never three or four months if we wanted to expand it. So I'm, I'm mentioning all that because I would like to, I checked with CIO Tuttle, make sure this was okay. I'm not asking for a formal vote or approval, but what I am asking is, if we felt that we were more likely to be successful by expanding it, but it meant that we would, as a county, would have to come up with another forty or fifty thousand dollars and wait another five or six months maybe to get it done, generally does this board support taking that direction and, and would consider providing that extra funding? And that would be based on the concern that it's not going to pass again if it's just lodging. That would be the reason to support that. If you support that, then I can take that back to the Advisory Board meeting and we can have a more open discussion on it. If there's no inclination to support that, then there's no point. And so I'm just looking for an indication from the board, given your level of understanding and your level of concern about whether if we go at it the same way we went at it the last time, will we be successful? And is it worth another forty, fifty thousand in several months to take a broader approach? So I'll stop there and just see what people have to say.
Rick, I have a question. Could you explain how this is weighted?
Yeah, the, so the voting, what happens is, the whole process is you, you get your list of businesses that fit whatever criteria you've defined. And then you have to get more than fifty percent vote in support of it. And if you do, then everyone, whether they voted for it or not, fall within it and are responsible for adding that three percent to their bill, if you will, for their clients. But that, as Supervisor Gogan is alluding to, that vote is weighted. So if there is a, in, in the case that we have right now, a lodging facility that has ten percent of TOT funds, then they get ten percent of the vote. Their one vote counts for ten percent. And if I have a vacation rental and it has, you know, point zero zero five percent of the TOT, that's how much my vote will count for. And so that's, that's really where it failed the last time, is there were a couple of hotel operators that said, no, don't want to add to my bill and I don't really think this will work and whatever reasons, you know, and so it pushed back and then they just didn't even take it all the way because they saw that they weren't going to get the votes. And that's the concern that sometimes keeps bubbling up. And so the concept is, well, maybe, you know, we're in a better place to be able to explain this, engage people, all that kind of stuff. And we will get the lodging owners, including with the short-term rentals and so forth, to be on board and support it. But then the other approach would be, but if you reached out to some of the other small businesses that are in the community that would benefit from tourism and they would be happy to participate, now their votes are counting as well. And so it, it dilutes, if you will, the big, one big piece of voting. So I'll stop and listen.
And if we continue on with Civitas after our contract, it'll be six or seven thousand dollars a month to continue on?
Right. And that's the, that's the estimate of another forty, fifty thousand dollars if we, if we expand the approach. And, and, and it's because it will take X number of more months.
Sure.
Right.
Thank you Supervisor Lutwiler.
Okay, hi. I just have one. Okay, so if it's forty or fifty thousand dollars more, I'm, I'm worried about the budget. We're not, the budget isn't in really good shape. Is there any other way to vote to make that vote so that it's not weighted? And there's no other way to do that? Yeah, then I, then I, I'm kind of against any more money going out into this. I understand the, you know, I'm just worried about the budget. It's not an absolute no or anything. But I just think we have to look at this with the roads and everything. In my district, the budget is really tight. So, yep.
So we're trying to get this direction as to whether they support it or not.
A question I would have is, well, I'm glad you brought this up, number one, because this is a huge concern that I had. After your last report out, I got really nervous about the likelihood of a failed attempt and then our thirty thousand is for naught. And there are some, situationally, some things are different this time than they were before. So that's fair to say that they all could be different as well. So I'm not casting gloom and doom. But I do wonder if there's any way to sort of take an early poll and kind of know where you stand rather than us taking our best guess from a distance with sort of a veiled lens?
Well, that, that is underway. I mean, some of the Advisory Board members have already been starting to reach out to some of their groups. And so we're sort of, you know, are their businesses, I should say, based on the current parameters. And, but that's also been a little bit limited because Civitas is supposed to be delivering us kind of the, if you will, the promotional materials for that. Like, here's the materials that will help you. And that's based on, well, what are you going after? And so they are charged with bringing that forward. So I will check with them to see what they're going to bring forward next Monday. But I'm, I'm, I'm sure that we could say, give us a good starting point of marketing materials. Let us go do a, a push. And, and then if we see that we're really running up against a likely failure, then we could, you know, be in a position to say, yeah, if we don't expand this, it's just going to fail. And the same is true if you chose to provide more funding and expanded it, same thing. You, you, you don't have to spend it all. That's what happened the last time, is they, they just stopped midway because they could see that we're going to fail. So you didn't go through the last month's worth of work. And that's why we're picking up on the last month's worth of work. So even if we said it would be another fifty, it would be another fifty because we think we're now going to be successful in this expanded manner. But, but to your point, yeah, we can do, and, and certainly, like I said, I'm not asking for a vote here now. I'm just trying to give, if, if you all say, no way, just deal with what you got, then okay. And if you said, well, we're open to it, then we can look at how we might determine whether that's the best approach.
Sure. Okay, so for, for my two cents, I, I hear Supervisor Banfield. And certainly I'm kind of risk averse and always looking at the dollars for what they are. But in this situation, I want to win. I, I want this project to win. And so if that means that we spend more, in essence, if, in my opinion, if you expanded it, you'd win bigger. Because we have more people paying in and we have more return on investment that these folks then can decide their best game forward as we continue to market our county, I want it to work.
And I should point out too, two things. One is the money that we're using and the money that we could access for this would be from one-time funding that was basically a return of TOT funding or one-time funding that we made in the past. So it's not like out of our normal ongoing sorts of funds. Number two, the way it's currently positioned, if it was three percent and it was lodging only, we're estimating, and Terry will help us with this, that it would mean about another two hundred thousand dollars a year that would come for tourism. If, and then it has the ability to go from three percent to five percent during that timeframe. So, so it could get up to three hundred thousand. But then if we expand it and we have other businesses, then it gets bigger. We're getting too detailed? Yeah.
So Chair, may I?
So Chair, may I?
Please.
So, yes, we're getting too detailed. So we just need, good, good conversation, good, good topic, I totally support the conversation and topic, but we really just need. A general thought to take this forward for an agenda item or not?
I would like to echo Supervisor Cox's statement. I, we need, I feel like we need to win this and I and I agree with the the statements that if if we expand it, we may. We may be more likely to win, so those are my thoughts.
I will make one last statement that about twelve thirteen years ago Civitas was here and tried to put forward the same thing. And they have an eighty five percent success rate. And they did not, they were not successful here. So this will be a full court press by the board, all the people in the community to get this done, this will not be easy. Everybody's going to have to work hard to get this done and and I know the board is prepared to. Supervisor Cox.
I know, I think it's just, we just need to get that indication and so I think, you know, I've heard two in favor.
So Chairman, do you, you for or against favor, not favor?
I do.
Okay, so I think you have enough to move forward.
Thank you.
What direction you need?
Sorry for getting into the weeds.
Supervisor Cox.
Oh, were you finished with your board report?
Yes, thank you.
Just a couple of things, first of all, I had no, I can't even travel to report, I do want to say the fire chiefs meeting last night, a couple of things. People do get concerned about when their burn permits, you know, are good and right now with folks are trying to get their. Fuels off the landscape, so please continue with that, you do need your burn permit and you can call to see if it's a burn day or not. But they project, so here we are at April fifteenth. This will, you'll be able to just keep burning away through May and Cal Fire is going to work very hard. To be very clear and get their announcements out when it's time to stop the burning, so if you have questions, reach out. But thank you for all of your efforts that people are making to work really hard at that. We have had multiple conversations over the years about how to initiate some jobs within our community with our kids growing up and keeping kids here. This Thursday at ten a.m. at the high school, Fire Chiefs Association has created the opportunity as a two hour. Sort of program with guest speakers. The various agencies will be there, Cal Fire, the Forest Service, the volunteers. Sharing with the kids an opportunity that they are creating, piloting a educational project. Where students could enter in and literally graduate with hours toward their fire accreditation. They've got. Example schools where the kids graduate with their E M T card, ready to go. So this is an exciting time for students to hear. The speakers that will be there are local kids that have grown up and graduated and are now working, there will be a flight medic there. Cal Fire workers, a couple of kids that are in the Shasta College Fire Academy at this time. So a good time at the high school, ten a.m. for students to. Learn about some great opportunities and I just love that this is going forward, it's something that, all right, various groups, T C D C included. Have talked about for a good number of months now, how to create these kind of local jobs and keep our kids here. That is the end of my report, thank you.
Supervisor Brownfield.
Thank you Chair. Okay, so went to a P U D meeting at Post Mountain just a few days ago. We had some really good conversations and I think that that is absolutely moving forward very well. The president of the P U D there, Belong Yang, is doing a beautiful job at plowing forward with with the things that need to be done. Working on the board. So that will be, that'll be one of my next, our next things to do is make sure that board is nice and strong on the P U D there. So I'm really excited about that, town halls, continue with my town halls and they're wonderful, I'm going to be adding a Post Mountain. Town hall probably on the same day as the P U D's, I'm hoping to do it at the end of that. So that we can, we can have some good catch ups there. I had a road tour up in Southern Trinity with the the director of the. Transportation, Panyos and Trent was with us that day. I'm extremely worried and discouraged about all of the money that we're losing to roads and. Schools too, but the roads right now, I'm horrendously worried about. So we're, I'm going to be looking at alternate funding, we're going to have to look at some creative funding. To get these roads fixed because ours are Post Mountain and in Southern Trinity are absolutely unacceptable right now. So that is my, that is my mission for the next foreseeable future is to make sure that we. That we secure funding for our roads up there and we had to. Yep, we aren't able to hire the two road crew members that we wanted to to open up the yard in Xenia. So I'm really worried about jobs up there too and safety, so that'll be my mission for the next little while is to get these roads done. A shout out to Yantra here in Weaverville, some friends of mine, opened up a wonderful wine bar there and they're very. They're very excited about it, it's a soft opening, so I just, I don't want to be too loud about that, but congratulations to them. And I'm excited for the path that they're taking there. Let's see, zoning, I'll be talking at my next town meetings, a lot about zoning to to my constituents. Making sure that their properties are zoned the way they want them zoned. Because this is the time now we start to talk about that, it's going to be coming this summer, we don't want to be stuck with. Properties zone the way we don't want them, so it's really important, that's that's extremely important that you stay engaged here with that. Garbage, so waste, working with solid waste to improve. Southern District. And to include Post Mountain somehow into solid waste, so I'm working on on on. Doing some communications there to get that. Going and Forest Service, so happy to hear the Forest Service engagement. With trees and so really, really, really happy with with the Forest Service and their engagement with us here in Southern District. Fire departments, as usual, we're coming up on fire. Time this year and thank you all for all of your hard work. Volunteer fire departments in our Southern District are second to none. And so we really appreciate those guys and we pray for a safe year. And I think finally, that's that's the end of my report, no out of town.
Do we have any questions? We will move on to the ad hoc homeless encampment deal Supervisor Cox.
I defer to C A O Tuttel.
Thank you Chair, I will provide a report out from our last ad hoc meeting, which was on April tenth. Made good representation from throughout the county staff and the two supervisors who are assigned to the ad hoc. The Cal Fire crews continue to work, there is still work scheduled as priorities and weather permits, we will see the Cal Fire crews. Continue to work on the county properties. There was another good camp walk at a different site location this time, the multi organizational group had some good interaction with. Variety of different individuals and some information was shared, so that. Process and that concept does seem to be working and we will continue that. The P I O is working to get, you know, the how the the information gathered and then shared as far as, you know, what what's happening, what the ad hoc is doing. On a routine basis, so that is forthcoming. And then we spent a decent amount of time reviewing a draft ordinance. That's been in the works since the ad hoc has really been, was really formed. So we all provided some input comments, that was consolidated, reconciled. And now that's being worked more the the formal aspect, going through some legal reviews and that kind of stuff. And then we will bring that forward for full board consideration at a future date. That's all I've got.
Thank you C A O Tuttel, do we have any questions? We will move on to the consent calendar. These items include routine non controversial matters and will be acted upon by the board. By one roll call motion, if a member of the public has any questions or comments on. A board on item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request to have an item pulled or considered separately. Do we have? Anybody on the board that wants to pull anything?
Yeah, just a just a question, just a question, not really first.
Okay, take public comment in the room? On Zoom?
I have no raised hands.
Okay, just D twenty eight, so I I want a little clarification, if anybody knows about. What this impact will have on the actual property owner themselves?
Would you, would you like to pull?
Yeah, just, would you pull just for, just for discussion?
And the number is?
And it's D twenty eight. It's the letter of of support for. The transient occupancy tax.
Do we have any?
For, I would like to, there's a clarification that needs to be made on the fiscal impact for item D one. That's the ag agreement. It, the fiscal impact reads as if it's additional revenue coming into the department, I apologize, it's actually an additional expense to the department. That's not actually a revenue contract, that's an expense contract, so instead of an additional ten thousand dollars potentially coming in, it's an additional ten thousand dollars. That could be going out under that contract.
And would that read impact to the general fund?
Yes, the ag department is a general fund.
But it's already in their budget.
Yes, okay.
Move that we approve all items except D twenty eight as presented?
I'll second. Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Chairman Gogan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item twenty eight was pulled by Julia Brownfield, Supervisor Julia Brownfield, please go ahead.
Okay, so I'm I'm just wondering if this is for the advertising, is it just? For that, for short term rentals? Is there any impact to the property owner? How is this, how is this actually going to work? Does anybody know? Okay, thank you.
Good morning Chair, members of the board, Terry McBrer, treasurer tax collector. The letter that you have before that I'm asking for support in what this does, basically, we are trying to catch up with the times. What happens is is there's many, many avenues, whether it be Airbnb, V R B O, Homeways, that they, that just continues. So basically, in in answer to your question, what this is going to do, I would say that there's not going to be much of an impact, if any, to the lodging facilities. What this will do is this is providing the tax collectors throughout the state with an avenue for. A tool for us in regards to collection of this. We have many that do not register and do not collect and so it prevents duplication of efforts and then. Ensuring that we have all the lodging facilities are participating as they should. Right now, what happens is, and there's no other realm where this takes place. They provide us with, not to all, but just to some who actually have voluntary collection agreements in place. So we do happen to have those in place, so we do receive funds from V R or Airbnb currently and then I have another one in place for V R B O. But essentially, they send us a check, they don't provide us with any information as far as who it's for and. That provides a lot of problems for us, so. Right now, our forms, they have to provide the information like how much was collected through Airbnb, it's a. Definitely a moving target for us, at one point when they were collecting, it was if you, if there's a V C A in place with the county. The Airbnb would collect that for us, they have since also allowed for individuals to opt out, so that provides yet another. Aspect to keep track of, so this will force their hand essentially for them to provide that information to us, so. We have many places that they have more than one. If you, they might have an additional dwelling unit in addition to the primary residence and so they're renting out both. This will provide us with the information we need for collections. This is, at this point, the only one that I'm aware of that is in opposition of this would be Airbnb, so all the different agencies throughout the state are in support of this. This is a ongoing problem. So. Thank you for that explanation, I've always been curious how. We were able to track or anywhere able to track, I stay often in Airbnbs and I always wonder. How do, how do the counties know or how do we, I just, so this has been an interesting read and and I I I support this, so thank you. And for IRS, you can't submit IRS a check and say, trust me, this is right, this is how much I think I'm, I I should pay, this is what you're owed. You can't do that, you need to provide supporting documentation for that. I can tell you, just a tad bit on this, an update, we did recently contract with an agency that. Well, not an agency, but it's a vendor that has algorithms, algorithms in place that monitor all the different venues and so it provides an additional tool for us. We sent out an initial letter, you know, that, hey, welcome, congratulations on your business, you missed some steps, you didn't register with us. With us sending out that notice that I'm aware of, so far, we have over sixty that are unregistered. With us and I sent out this letter and within five days of sending out that letter, I received eighteen new registrations for individuals. And another piece of this that will play into with with Civitas, I forget the pronunciation of that that vendor, but. We have, according to our vendor, there are some that are. Their revenues are exceeding what our hotel facilities are and they are unregistered at this time, so just for the. Impact and the need of this, if you have a Airbnb that's generating more revenue than our hotels, that's goes to show that's a need, so. With that, if you have any other questions.
Anybody have any questions?
I just, I just want to clarify to you again, so Terry, the. The net of this is, it's not imposing any new taxes, any, people are already responsible and what this is doing is helping us. Get the detail that we need to ensure that what we are receiving and what's being reported are all matching up.
And this creates some efficiencies for us as far as for auditing purposes, because the the host is still required irregardless of what. Online platform that they opt to use for renting out their facilities, they are still required to report to the county, so there is no impact in that aspect, so. Thank you.
Terry, thank you very much. Any public comment? On Zoom?
I have no raised hands.
We will move into county, sorry, we're going to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass item D twenty eight.
I'll second that. Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Chairman Gogan?
Aye.
Thank you.
We will move into county matters, these items include non routine or controversial matters and are are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board, staff or public may request that an item be heard out of order. We will start with E one, community development, natural resources, appropriate budget adjustment for. County year twenty four twenty five for natural resources, departments twenty seven hundred, increasing transfers in by. Eighty two thousand two hundred dollars and decreasing revenues by one hundred and sixty seven thousand four hundred and thirty seven dollars. And salaries and benefits by fifty three thousand six hundred and forty six. salaries and benefits by fifty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-six. An approved budget adjustment for county year twenty-four, twenty-five for general fund contingency. Department thirty-nine oh one, decreasing appropriations for contingency by eighty-two thousand, two hundred dollars. Do we have a department head here? Would you like to speak on it? Ed, please.
Board? You know, this is one of those situations where, if you read the staff report and everything, which I imagine everybody did, if you go back to last year, the reason for the hundred and forty thousand dollar shortfall in natural resources was based on contracts that needed to be put into place and need to be followed, so that they could be, you know, drawn from to complete projects. As we went into this fiscal year, I started noticing a little bit of a trend as I looked in into the day-to-day occurrences. And so essentially, we got into a disciplinary situation. So it became more of a progressive discipline. It did take a number of months. So that individual no longer works for the county. The eighty-two thousand, two hundred dollars that we're requesting for contingency essentially is to cover what should have been covered by the individual pulling from those contracts that were in place at the beginning of the fiscal year. So we're trying to just make natural resources right, balanced physically. You know, we're hoping that as going forward, that the other employee in natural resources is going to be able to pull some of the money from the good neighbor authority through DOT to maybe keep this going. The two other contracts are kind of paused right now from Watershed Center and Resource Conservation District. And so we're hoping to be able to continue those going forward, but that will be contingent on whether or not we can get another person hired on as well. We don't plan on hiring another person in the Natural Resources Division until fiscal year turns over, which is why we put the fifty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars in salary savings in there.
Does the board have any questions?
Yeah, I do. I'm really concerned about this, this department. The money that's going into this department and the results from it are really discerning to me. So.
Is this a question?
It's not a question. It's a statement.
Okay, so this is just for questions?
Questions. Oh, okay.
Sorry, we just have to wait till after public comment.
Okay, all right. No question.
Open the room to public comment.
I have no raised hands.
And Zoom? Nothing? That was your Zoom? All right, then we'll bring it back to the board.
And then to make a motion so we can have the discussion, I move that we approve as presented?
I second.
And then?
Uh, real quick, Supervisor, before you do that, within your motion, will you also include the approval of, there's one piece of a budget adjustment that's not listed here that is needed in order to actually complete this? So can your motion include the approval of a budget adjustment for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five for contributions to others? Department nineteen ninety, increasing the transfers out by eighty-two thousand, two hundred. We have the transfer in piece. We have the reduction in general fund contingency. We just didn't include the mechanism to actually transfer, appropriation to transfer the money over there.
Yeah, that's what I meant to say.
I thought, thank you.
Thank you.
That's what I meant to second.
Thank you.
Okay, so now Supervisor Brownfield, sorry for interrupting you before.
Um, yeah, this, this department is a problem for me, because the money that's gone into it is, just keeps going. And I read the, the report. The report's really discerning to me that the money has gone out and not gone out in a nice way. So I would, I would make a second motion not to pass this and to have more discussions on the solvency of this department.
Suzie, would you like to take a?
We have to see if there's a second.
We had a second, didn't we?
So she's made a second, second motion.
Any discussion or a second motion?
There is a second motion. Do we have a second for Julia's subsequent motion?
That's what I was asking.
So I will, I will second for, so that we can have the discussion. So Supervisor Brownfield, I think what, I certainly understand your concerns. I sent out some questions and thoughts to staff over the weekend to make sure that I really understood what was going on here. And my takeaway is that we had a problem last year. We tried to address it. It cost us a hundred and forty thousand. That problem continued this year. It has been addressed. The individual that was causing the problem is no longer with us, and therefore, there is no more money that would be bleeding, if you will. And this is simply the financial cleanup. We really don't have a choice of that, we, we have to, we have to put the money in here because we didn't get it elsewhere, and we didn't get it elsewhere because the person didn't do the work, and that person's no longer with us to keep causing trouble. I'm making it oversimplified and not very nice, but that's the net of it. And so I don't understand, I just need to understand where you're coming from, because I don't, I understand the concerns, but I don't understand what you're asking them to do that's different, because they have, we have to make the financial changes.
Okay, so if we make the financial changes and we discuss maybe at a further, at a different time, the, the problems that we have with the department?
So maybe, maybe having them prevent, present an update about the Natural Services Division that goes into more detail about the work that they're doing, where the funding's coming from, why it won't be a problem in the future?
Or if, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
If we, if we agree that it continues at some point.
But I think we can just, yeah, we can just give that direction to staff as we'd like that presentation. And I'm fine with that.
Okay, perfect.
And then, so do you want to keep this motion, or do you want to?
That's fine. We can, well, no, I can withdraw my motion, and we can, we can, as long as we have the.
Okay, and I'll withdraw my second.
So we will go back to the first motion. Suzie, will you take a roll call?
I'm sorry. Just, I'd like to modify my motion then based on this and, and add that, and it includes staff direction to present to the board an update about the Natural Services Division in the future. You good with that? As a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Suzie?
All right, you guys ready?
Oh, man.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Chairman Gogan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item E two, Community Development Cannabis. Discuss and undertake one of the following actions regarding amending Trinity County Village Section seventeen dash four point four three pertaining to commercial cannabis regulations and Section seventeen point three two pertaining to use permits. A, weigh the reading of and enact an ordinance amending Trinity County Code Section seventeen point four three and Section seventeen point three two as introduced on April first, twenty twenty-five. Or B, introduce and waive the reading of an ordinance amending Trinity County Section seventeen point three and Section seventeen point three two as advised after the April one, two thousand, twenty-five meeting. Unknown fiscal impact. Drew, good to see you.
Good day, Chair. Supervisors, Streep, LeBoni, Cannabis Division Director. I guess I'd like to start by acknowledging an error in the staff report that was provided to you all. I believe we got questions from the majority of the supervisors about that. And so just for clarity's sake, when the staff report was initially prepared, three options were presented. Option A being what was originally presented to the Planning Commission. In what you all received, option A was removed, which then moved option B and C to be termed option A and B, which is the reason that the staff recommendation that was published says option C, but it means to say option B. So I, I think you've already, you know, with the introduction that was given by Chair Gogan, you're already aware that there are sort of two options before you, one would be considered a second reading, one would be considered a first reading. I don't know how much of the historical background you would like for me to review, or what all would be helpful in terms of giving you the information you need to make an informed decision today.
Does the board have any questions?
I think from my perspective, if you'll pick up where, first of all, I want to say thank you for the work that was done at our last meeting. The investment of those forty-five minutes, in my opinion, was productive to have all of our heads in the same room. But I can also appreciate that over the course of a couple of weeks, as things settle in your mind, as new situations come to mind, then new thoughts arise and new direction becomes necessary for suggestion and consideration. And so thank you for that. I feel like we put a pin in some work, and now we're moving forward further. Would you agree?
Yes.
Great. From my perspective, if you want to pick up where we left off and move us forward with your new option B, I would appreciate that.
Okay. So, you know, I'll step back slightly further. And so the original language that went to the Planning Commission was primarily intended to address the use of the terms Community Development Director and Planning Director. And so that was the primary intent of what we brought forward to the Planning Commission. Then on the April first meeting, we got into discussion and into modifying a separate code section, to which, you know, we talked about for forty-five minutes. I took notes. And then I believe that various community members reached out to their supervisors and/or to the CAO's office to sort of address some of the concerns that they had in terms of the impact that those proposed changes that we discussed on the first would have. So with a bit more, you know, time to consider, kind of, and so I also, you know, had discussions with CEO Tuthill, Supervisor Lutwiler also came to the office, and we discussed this. And it became clear to me that the intent of what we discussed on the April, during the April first board meeting was really to try to prevent new development within three hundred and fifty feet of an adjacent legal dwelling. I'll use the term legal dwelling. That's one of the things that we also talked through at the April first meeting, and is reflected in both option A and option C, the conversion of legal residence to legal dwelling, so that it matches more effectively with legal dwelling, which is the term that is defined in seventeen four three. In, in, you know, more closely reviewing the language that we talked through on four one, and if my understanding of the intent is correct, I proposed option B's language to try to capture the intent as I understood it, based on the discussions we had on April first. And so some of the things essentially that I removed were, were proposed to change were the whole legacy concept. Because as we discussed and then modified that on the first, to me, the use of the term legacy in this context really has no value and doesn't actually provide us with anything constructive, because we just took a term, you know, legacy that refers to, I guess, something, you know, a cultivation operation or cultivation site that probably predated Prop sixty-four in the legalization of cannabis. And then we narrowed the scope of how we were defining legacy to be something that was actively licensed in the last six months. So that's the reason that in option B, you no longer see the term legacy in there. And so would it be helpful if I just read the proposed changes from option B now, or do you? You tell me how you'd like.
Go ahead, Drew.
Okay. So the proposed staff's recommended language for Code Section seventeen point four three, zero five one, A three, is reflected with strike through and underline, and so you'll see it included as four, but it is a proposed change to subsection three. The buffer reduction will only be allowed for previously developed sites, which means that there are pre-existing mature canopy areas within three hundred and fifty feet of an adjacent legal dwelling, which have been established and utilized for cultivation prior to the adoption of this ordinance. Sites with an approved appendixy document can apply for a buffer reduction. So that, basically the last sentence, I'll address separately, but you know, the, the buffer reduction only being allowed for previously developed sites, I think is a cleaner way to approach this dynamic. One of the concerns that was raised after we talked these potential changes through on the first was that essentially the language that we landed on would have limited future ABRs to essentially only projects that had previously approved CCVs, and would only really functionally apply to the remaining CCVs that were authorized to gain licensure under the Streamlining Act, and that, yeah, basically, the only ABRs that would be allowed going forward essentially would be the historical CCVs that had not yet converted from the CCV to the ABR process. So one of the other things in terms of, you know, specific areas of the county, most specifically Post Mountain, is that because of the small parcel sizes, that anytime a dwelling was finalled, then the surrounding parcels would be prevented from essentially gaining a license, because there would be no path forward to them, for them to apply for the administrative buffer reduction, because we prevented it, given that there were, you had to be licensed within the last six months. So if they aren't currently licensed, then they wouldn't be able to apply for administrative buffer reduction. So in terms of, you know, I would say an understanding that, and perhaps you all aren't aware, but the, the majority, if not all of the cultivation licenses that we've gotten during this calendar year and let's say over the last six months have almost exclusively been from the Post Mountain area. So that is why we, we sort of gave our best attempt to rework the language that we talked through on the first, and sort of clarified that into, you know, previously developed sites, which means that there are pre-existing mature canopy areas within three hundred and fifty feet of an adjacent legal dwelling, which have been established and utilized for cultivation prior to the adoption of this ordinance. So the reason that the second half of that sentence is constructed in the way that it is, is because my concern was that if there were mature canopy areas that we can show via aerial imagery have previously been utilized for cultivation, then that's a scenario where the development has already occurred versus creating the potential loophole whereby, over the next forty-five days, someone could go ahead and develop without having an application in. Someone could go ahead and develop within three hundred and fifty feet of an adjacent legal dwelling, and then they would be able to apply for the ABR because it was previously developed. So that's why that second part of that sentence was included, so that there has to, not only did it have to be previously developed, but it had to be previously utilized for cultivation. So I hope that, that gives a little bit of an explanation as to sort of how and why that language is presented to you in the way that it is. And then that last sentence, sites with an approved appendixy document can apply for a buffer reduction. That's a carryover from when this ordinance was first established, and was my attempt to round out the language that Supervisor Frazier included related to legacy. Because my concern at that point was that we may have, we may have approved environmental documents that hadn't yet been licensed, and, and also that I didn't want us to create a situation where we approved a project, and then because of the changes to the ABR code section, that then we sort of had to reverse our approval without giving them a path to at least, you know, get this heard by the Planning Commission, or see if the neighbors are opposed, things like that. So I think that, that rounds out my overview. So, I think that that rounds out my overview. If you have any specific questions now or after public comment, of course, I'm here to do my best to answer.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
Okay, I do. And really, I think, Drew, hopefully, it'll just be clarifying to make sure I am understanding and following all this right, since I think I caused some of the confusion last time. So, first of all, this is all about... We had been using variances and we wanted to move away from that. So, now, we're doing buffer reduction zones. Then, we were trying to say, okay, there should be limits on how and when the buffer reduction zone process is applied. And as we were listening to it last time, I got, in my head, caught up in the legacy part and that it seemed like, oh, so we want to reward people who've been doing things illegally and give them a foot up on others. And that's where my head was. And when we finished and I spoke to a couple of people, Lisa Wright, I don't know if she's still in here, reached out to me, said, "Did you know that it had this impact?" And that impact being, like in post-mountain, where we have lots of smaller, already developed sites that are in neighborhoods where there is likely to be no opposition. And by the changes we made, they no longer can move forward in a way that would require this buffer reduction zone, the way that we left it the last time.
Right.
Okay. And so, that now, with the changes that we're proposing, it would allow that to happen and it would prevent us having new parcels developed to create three hundred and fifty-foot setback problems. But it would allow for, if that already exists and there isn't neighbor problems with it, then now that could still move on, which, again, to me, specifically benefited the post-mountain-type arena. If you make the assumptions, yes, there are a lot of parcels that have already been developed for this purpose. And yes, there are a lot of people that are supportive of those continuing to be used for cannabis. Is that... Am I getting all that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Do you have public comment in the room?
Board, Chair, Supervisors Lisa Wright-Lewisson. So, extremely concerning. Kind of went down last meeting in an empty room. Okay? We went completely, really, off-topic, off-agenda item. Now, I know county council said that it was okay. Lawyers defend murders, okay? That doesn't mean you do it. So, to make changes to code on the fly without any discussion, it's not good governance. And frankly, I don't understand, with all due respect, why District One and Two are kind of leading that charge when you're almost all carved out. We've always looked to the district chair, the district supervisors, for what they would like for what's impacting their districts the most. And when I watched that, I was just really pretty appalled. Very... I thought it wasn't good governance. With all due respect, you have tough jobs. But now, we're at a point where bringing the realization of, look what they did on the fly without public input and without agenda, without the director asking for it, I think that option B is an appropriate solution to make that correction. We can definitely live with that. The Friends of Post-Mountain Project, we've been working on, that have over thirty in the queue right now. We're all done with the idea that only previously disturbed areas, no new tree cutting, no new grading, or this program, no, isn't going to work well for you. The other point that I'd like to bring forth is that this is a self-funded program from the farmers. This is not general tax dollars that need to be protected by you. It's not, you know, it does go budgetary, but this is self-funded. I think input from the farmers and from the director should be really where you're taking your direction. Otherwise, it comes off as kind of looking like, especially like District One and Two, like you're trying to harm the other districts. And it doesn't really make sense. I'm a District One person. And I know, Rick, that wasn't your intent. We talked about it, but there was a result that could have been catastrophic for people who are trying to become legal, trying to benefit the county, both in terms of good stewardship of their land, getting into a program with high environmental regulations, as well as contributing to the cultivation tax, which then goes into your general fund dollars. So, you know, we are where we're at. I would just ask, moving forward, that you please follow the staff's directions. If you have input from farmers, then maybe bring that forth or discuss it with the director. But we really need support for this program and not ways, code changes on the fly, not good governance for any particular part of the code, is my view. And I would ask that you go forward with option B today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room?
Again, I'm speaking on behalf of the community in post-mountain. As all I hear today, the revised option B, I think we can live it there. And I'd like to thank Drew, whoever revised the language, so we understand better. And we support that option B. And we'd like to ask the board to support that as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room? On Zoom?
Adrian?
Hey, thank you, Chair, Supervisors, Staff, Adrian Keyes from Hayfork. I too am speaking in favor of option B today. It seems like the best way to unwind the unfortunate direction that the last meeting took. And I also really want to support what Ms. Wright was saying a minute ago about input from the community in a fee-driven program that... We don't need to go back into the whole Proposition Twenty-six story, but I just kind of did. So, please be aware of of how the Cannabis Division funds are used. They need to be used to support the industry. They need to be used to support the fee payers. And so, on an item like this, I think that the fee payers input should be somewhat heavily weighted. And I'm hoping that as we move forward through our ordinance updates, that that's also taken into consideration at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other on Zoom?
Catherine? Catherine, did you have comments?
Yes, thank you. Catherine Sidman-Lewisson-Road-Lewisson, option B, please. And I really hope that this is a a learning experience. I really appreciate Rick's transparency in recognizing that that last meeting was... There was kind of recklessness and not intentionally, perhaps, but these small changes are so significant. And I just want you to look at the room today. And I want you to see that there are forty people there who all had to drive well over an hour or an hour and a half to get to you and to stop what they're doing. Supervisor Harris mentioned gardening and how we all want to be outside. These are farmers, folks. This is a busy time of the year. And we are now in a position that if we are not in every single room when this board is meeting or when the planning commission is meeting, things like this will happen and they have to be on our radar. The financial impact to these small businesses who are already, frankly, kind of... Persecuted is too strong a word, but certainly dogged by these sort of things that come up. And I don't mean to be hyperbolic, but I really hope that we can get to a point, at some point, where it's enough that we face the challenges outside the county and the challenges in our own small businesses. But to have to have a contingency at every meeting, I just don't think that that's feasible. I don't think it's necessary. And I don't think anybody really wants that. And so, I hope that this is a cautionary tale. I hope that we all learn something about these small sort of off-agenda spontaneous, small moves that make a really big difference. This was very impactful. And I hope that everybody just takes a breath next time and we don't have to do this every single time. The... This took us back in terms of trust and a climate of collaboration and a sense of cooperation and collaboration. This took us back and that's really unfortunate.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom?
iPhone?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Liza Wizneski, Junction City. I would like to express my support for option B. At the last meeting, it was mentioned that individuals who have been cultivating illegally over the last seven years should not be allowed to apply for an A B R. I know there's been some changes since then, but I want to continue. However, the alternative would be to force these legacy cultivators to continue operating illegally, particularly on sites that now require an A B R. How does that benefit our communities and environment? Many areas of the county cultivating cannabis is viewed no differently than growing vegetables or medicinal herbs. Some neighbors even value the positive economic impact that these small businesses bring to their communities. I believe the planning commission's intent in updating the ordinance was to provide clarity and prevent the kind of unjust outcome we witnessed when a longstanding operation was shut down due to a new neighbor's opposition. I appreciate the work that has been put in to make those necessary changes, but I'm disappointed that that resulted in proposing to preclude new applicants from applying for an A B R. This kind of uncertainty makes doing business in Trinity County difficult. Rules are constantly shifting. And people who are already deep into the costly and time-consuming sequo process now face the possibility of being denied an A B R altogether. Keeping up with the constantly changing policies is challenging, especially for Cannabis Division staff, who must inform the public that their project that met the requirements a couple of weeks ago is now at the mercy of the next board supervisors' meeting. I believe that now more than ever, our county must offer stability and support to those dedicated to coming into compliance with their program. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom?
Ben?
Good morning again. Ben Kellogg-Weverill, option B. Because of everyone else's previous opinion, still my thunder. But, yeah, we need to be inclusive in bringing everyone in to the fold and be legal at this point in time. And, you know, not trying to be critical or belittling, but, you know, we brought these issues up at the previous meeting. Unfortunately, it was, you know, people decided to plow ahead, you know, good intentions, hopefully. But, again, this is not a District One or District Two issue. The district supervisors who this affects should have taken the lead and, you know, not had other supervisors take the lead. You know, others take a sit-back, ask questions approach. You know, District One and District Two have done their own thing. You know, if the other supervisors had questions, concerns, or issues, they need to step up and say so or let the will of the people for that district do their thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more on Zoom?
I have no additional raised hands.
We will bring it back to the board.
I move that we... Oh, yeah, we're ready for this. I move that we support, approve the recommendation presented by staff.
Which would be B? I will second.
And for discussion? Where to begin? I think the main thing is to say, it is unfortunate and I understand the baggage that is carried, that we all carry. But I think everything seems to be seen through a filter. So, there, obviously, based on comments, there are people who feel like there was ill-intent or the term used recklessness, none of which I agree with. I think that there was some good discussion going on. We intentionally brought it back for public comment so that people could have a chance to weigh in on what was said. I also think it's either ill-informed or disingenuous to say that, as elected officials, we are supposed to sit back and not take interest or give input to things unless they are very prominently affecting our district. And I would also say, if that ordinance change said, "And this in District Three", it would have been a different subject. But it didn't. It was our county ordinance. So, I just... Sometimes I just get frustrated with people seeing everything through a ill-informed or ill-intended lens. And I feel that the board tried to make good, informed decisions last time. As we said, it would come back here for this either second reading or first reading again, no matter what. So, I feel good about the process that we went through. I feel good about the fact that we listened and studied and addressed concerns that were brought to us since. And I appreciate Drew's work to get us on the right track and his help with me understanding, you know, where the things that I had brought up were having an impact that I had not intended. So, I just...
Any other comment on the board?
I just thank you for putting this forward and for being thoughtful about about going back and discussing it and making the changes that we needed to make. That was a good thing. And I'm glad that it was presented to us today in a way we could vote to make everybody happy. So, thank you very much for your patience.
Any other comment from the board?
Um, yes. I think that I find myself in a space of feeling a piece of frustration at an intention that says, when we look at other topics and we're sure to make whole-of-county considerations in our views and in our decisions going forward, sometimes those, when they benefit your opinion, are praised. And if it is viewed as perhaps infringing upon your opinion, then they are harshly criticized. And I just would say that I will continue to take a whole-of-county view on things because while there are people here that, yes, who have driven an hour and a half to be here, which is your prerogative under the form of government that we enjoy, you can come and be a part of a process. There was, from my seat, no intent to change up someone's world in a moment in a way that was egregious or painful or shifting. But the conversation that we had was very much interactive with our Cannabis Division Director, looking for, is this going to help? Is this going to work? All the time with the understanding that if there's anything that we've missed, we have another opportunity. And so, that's what today is about. And so, it is a successful outcome to have time to think on those things. The same reason you don't buy a new car the same day you look at it. You think about it and what are the ramifications of the choices that you're going to make. So, to spend the time that we did in conversation, again, I thought was productive and helpful to gain new understanding. So, I am appreciative of where we have landed. But I, for one, will continue to have all But I for one will continue to have a whole of county perspective and I do enjoy having my perspective enlarged and seeing the specific situations where there may be areas where we need to look at an overlay zone that makes something that is already unique move forward in a way that remains unique into that space. So, you know, to put a pin in this moment and say that trust has been diminished makes me sad. And because I feel like we worked hard to have understanding between us and come up with a conclusion that's going to be helpful. Our process today, if my understanding is correct, this option B is now a first reading. So we have two more weeks to make sure that where we've landed is right and good, which we did say last time. If where we hit was good and where we wanted to be, we were saving time so that things could move forward for folks in a way that was more expeditious. If it didn't, we weren't out anything because, again, we would have yet another two weeks, which is what has happened.
Thank you. Any other comment on the board?
I just want to speak to the conversation during the last meeting. It's unfortunate that seeking counsel and also having conversations with people in leadership. There's there's wisdom in, there's wisdom in consulting those who are in positions of of knowledge. And we did have a very long conversation last week and we we worked through different motions to delay or to move forward or to wait and bring it back, as Supervisor Cox said. And we are bound to only speak about things in this forum. If we were to take off and two of us meet, then two of us, that's against the law. So so sometimes you do have to listen to us trying to work through how each of us sees different things and making sure that we're representing the folks in our districts. And and then, as Supervisor Cox said, representing whole of county. We don't get to make decisions just based off of what's good for our district. We have to make decisions that are what's good for the whole of county while representing the folks in our district. So I I was I was grateful for the conversation last week and I do believe that because of that and the conversations we've had today and the work that was done by our fantastic staff, that we have come to a place now where we can make a decision in advance. So thank you for enduring our conversation last week and sorry if it had any impact on you that you didn't enjoy. But for us, I believe it was helpful, beneficial, and we we've made it to a place that we have confirmation in in our opinions. Thank you, staff, for all of the extra work that you've done. It's appreciated and seen.
Thank you. I would just like to say thank you, Drew and his staff, for doing a great job getting us clarity here, getting this right, and we needed to. It's a big issue for the the folks in Post Mountain especially. And I would just like to thank all the people who showed up here that it could have affected. It's always good to rally behind a cause. And when I look out there and see forty odd people who have rallied behind the cause that may affect them, it it weighs on me a lot. So I just want to thank you and I want to thank Drew and his staff for getting this right. I also think option B is the right option today. We have a motion and a second.
Are you ready?
I am ready.
Chairman, go again.
Aye.
Supervisor Luthwiler.
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter-Harris?
Aye.
Thank you.
Have a closed session report out, which we did not have a closed session last, last meeting.
Turned to closed session?
We will go into closed session. I will, but I'll let them get out the door.
Are you going to have a public comment before closed session, on your closed session?
Your time's up. Your time's up.
When?
Closed session, F1, Government Code Section 549545C, Conference with Legal with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Number of Cases Two, National Prescription Opiate Litigation Case Number One, One Eight OP Four Five Oh Nine Oh One, Lewandowski, I hope I said that right, Lewandowski, Versus County Attorney at All, US District Court Case Two Two Four, CV One Zero One Six Nine Seven, JAM-JPD. F2, Government Code Section Five Four Nine Five Four, E Point Five E, Public Employee Evaluation County Administrative Officer. Do we have any public comment in the room?
Chair Supervisors Lisa Wright, putting aside ego, there's a lot of ego. I do want to remind the board that in the item two, the review of the county administrative officer, in the past, the grand jury had found that those were sessions that were used inappropriately by previous boards. Just reminding you, though, that that is not the time to give direction on new topics or non-agendized items. That all still needs to come forth in the public, that it should be a review just of performance and not direction outside of public purview. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody on Zoom?
I have no raised hands.
We are adjourned.